While she's getting that going, we have, staff has been approached with a request to rezone approximately 22 acres south of Windsor Parkway in the Windsor Office Park development. This would be a rezoning from commercial to medium density and high density residential for both, for what's likely to be a mixture of owner occupied and rental occupied housing units, townhouse style development. Did update our comprehensive plan with this last update showing this area with a mixture of medium density and high density residential. So largely this rezoning would be consistent with our comprehensive plan. What staff and applicant are seeking guidance from the council on this evening is, one, the general concept that's being proposed. Two, a whether or not the road connection between Windsor Parkway and Northwest Windsor Drive in to the south, which is currently stubbed on the south side of the property. If that needs to be connected, there was a traffic study completed by both with, with this proposal. And largely what that study found was that from a neighborhood connectivity perspective, the roadway would certainly benefit. But there doesn't seem to be a traffic demand necessitating it. So it probably could kind of go either way. And it's kind of at the discretion of council. And if feel it's necessary to get that better connectivity in the neighborhood back out to signalized dinners. That's an item we want to address. Of the extension of trails through the area and general park and needs for the area. What is the council thinks needed for that? That's a very brief rundown. Happy to go into further details needed. We do have representatives of developer here as well, and I would like to give them a chance. Questions for me at this moment?
Show on the map which part of the roadway you're talking about. Guidance on?
Yeah, so the concept drawing here does not actually show it. If you want to go back and maybe open up the traffic memo.
Put it on the screen and show us.
Maybe the comp, the, the page above it in the staff report, the land use.
That's what I was trying to get to. I didn't have her open the right thing. Development concept of the landowner to the south, Clarkson Land Company. I did email that out earlier today and then we did add a copy on board docs here. In discussion with them, it was staff's understanding that the roadway or nor against necessarily, their primary need is for sanity or to service their development. Likely make a development work on their property with or without the road, but sanitary sewer is critical. That would need to go up to Windsor Parkway.
Have the fire chief in the audience.
What the entire development is, it's kind of hard to know how many generally, generally several areas in town that.
Clayton, do you want, you've got three issues you want us to react to. Do you want to just generally describe the issue and then see what reaction you get?
Yeah, would you like some additional information from the developer first about what they would like to construct here?
Marshburn, Caliber Homes. So.
For sale and for rent townhome product. On this site in particular, on the four, on the medium density, the R3 zoning that we're requesting, the product type that we would be primarily considering is the two-story, three-bedroom townhome project. And then on the R4, the higher density, it would be still a townhome product, but they would be three-story on tall. The three-bedroom units, the two-story units, we would, those would be most likely for sale product, and that would be backing up to the single-family neighborhood to the west and the south. The, the three-story product that would be more in the along Windsor Parkway itself would likely be a combination of for sale and for rent. And if we were, if we were leaning on one over the other, we'd probably be looking at for sale at this moment. There's a pretty good demand for for sale townhome products in this, in the market. Primarily, we've built for rent townhome. Yeah, sorry, I didn't have that for you guys in electronic fashion or a copy for each of you, but photos of some things that we've done.
Where's this project that you've got photos of?
There's sub, there's, there's about four or five different product, projects in that packet. So the first one that you see, that's in Prairie Trail in Ankeny. That's a project that we're just under construction on right now. We've done quite a few projects in the Ankeny trail market. Yeah, that's a three-bedroom, two, or a three-story, two-bedroom townhome that we're building in Prairie Trail right now, and that's actually a rental project there. I don't, I guess I don't have them all memorized, but the, the next one I think was a other Prairie Trail project that we've built. Those are for sale. That's a two-story, three-bedroom townhome backing up to a pond there in the Chautauqua Park area of Prairie Trail, so.
A couple of questions here. So you're trying to build medium density homes on that?
Right.
And it's adjacent to single-family homes. Has this been proposed to people around, do they know about this?
So, so we have not reached out to any of the neighbors yet. We wanted to get some feedback from council and just see how this concept of a rezoning would go. We, I was just speaking with Clayton in the hallway about that. And basically, our plan was to reach out to the neighborhood as soon as we got the feedback from you, from you guys.
One concern is that you're trying to build medium density townhomes like next to single families.
Sure.
Had this prior, but I presume that a strong pushback on that density and high density next to loaded.
The R3, what does that allow for? Is the, R3 allows for eight units per acre, and I think we had 10, that are 12 acres slated for R3, and then 10 acres of the higher density. I think the R4 allows you to go up to 16 units. So our typical two-story townhome product, we get somewhere between six to eight acre, and they're a four-unit building. Four plaques is what they are. So I, I think it was, how many on the medium? Get up to 80 units if you had 10 acres of it at eight units.
Eighty units of medium density?
On the medium density, right.
Low density also said something about low density too. Are billing low density here as well?
Oh, low density, yeah. Density and high density.
Maximum of 120. But Clayton, just by, for comparison purposes, so across on the north side of Windsor Parkway that we have the co-op right now.
The co-op has zoned R4, that's max 16 units an acre. Right around there at that 16. And then the townhomes that were just to the west of that, that's an R3, and they're just at eight units an acre.
But this, what's proposed here would match the densities.
Yeah, it'd be very similar. I'm gonna say each was on four.
We wouldn't be going all as though. Right, because that's all kind of one build.
Yeah, right, yeah. And, you know, if we recall back to the Windsor Row Homes, which recently went through the process, that may be an indicator of what we might hear from the neighborhood. That particular instance architecture was very important. How does the rear of the homes look backing up to them?
Well, and the other thing too, frankly, I think if the neighbors realize that this proposal the plan that connected Windsor Road now under this proposal, maybe that wouldn't happen. And so traffic that it would be coming off.
Yeah, and you know, I, maybe that's a good segue back into one of the main items we're looking for feedback this evening is whether or not this road connection needs to occur. The both memo did identify that, you know, this current concept could be modified potentially to have that connection. There's potential other routes that it could take. But really, it becomes a bit of a judgment call on, does the council feel that we need this? And if, if not needed, they would proceed to plan without it, and then we would essentially. That's one of the main items we're looking for.
Your first, your first item, Clayton, was general concept.
Yeah, we can, we can go there.
Comfortable with generally what's being proposed here. I would say that I'm sort of comfortable with where you're going here, but I will be very concerned on the details. The, the appearance, the, you know, so that the big thing with those neighbors was not a blocky. They wanted changing the siding, they wanted, you know, they wanted a high-quality exterior. And I would also say landscape can't be shortened either. So I'm willing to consider it.
Yeah, I think that would be sort of my perspective. Considering that it's consistent with what's I, you know, I sent some questions to Clayton over the weekend, sort of saying, what extent have you talked to the, the neighbors? Hasn't been, and so, so I, and again, but I do think, I, I think one of the selling points, I do think is that if that road is not extended, that's a real ben, I think they'll see that as a benefit. Think that's a legitimate benefit, and I also believe that we don't need to. Selling point of the project.
Other comments on the road? I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting a general sense that everybody is comfortable with encouraging them to go forward and see, come up with.
I have a question on that. So there's a school up there close by, right? So your traffic study, when it is done, would be considered the
All the existing conditions out there? There was no traffic direction perspective. Really all we're talking about is probably just rerouting existing trips, not creating.
Who has the land to the east?
Directly to the east of what this piece is, it's the
So if someday it was made to take the road through or if it never happens, whatever.
At point in time, I mean, it would be multiple for. This development they're proposing wouldn't automatically close the door on the possibility of the road. Difficult to get the road in the future.
Again, we're talking so conceptually here, it's difficult. My perspective, you know, I'd kind of like to see the layout of what you're proposing here. Tell me how it works without the road, and then I'd feel more comfortable saying, yeah, you've got it.
Yet though, is that we're positive feedback for
Hard to know what you're gonna do.
I think, I think what you're hearing is we're positive to the extent that we know what we know about the proposed, uh, proposed project.
You know, typically, we don't deal with roads as part of rezoning up in the plating or site plan process. Why that can't, those decisions can't be deferred until then.
Well, it is, I mean, it's part of our agreement with the Jenny. That's the price that we've agreed to. Final decision, I guess.
Asking us to remove all risk for you, and I don't know that we can.
And you, typically, we would expect a lot more information in exchange for that, so. I think generally what we're hearing is, you know, the zoning districts are generally comfortable with, subject to the details. You're open to the possibility that the road doesn't go through, subject to, again, some more details on how the overall layout of the area would be.
I guess one other thing we haven't talked about, but my understanding as well, part of the proposal would be that there would be a trail both on the south side. I think, given the fact that it's consistent with the comp plan, I could see certainly a roadmap for this. All right, but I, but I think that's, that's better than.
Examples of some product that you've built and attractive.
Different than that, I mean, that's
Want to work with you.
Yes. Long as, uh, they're concerned. Any other questions?
Okay, Jim, we have four minutes. We have four items left on the agenda.
Item C and D can't wait till the end of the regular agenda. If how long do you think item B?
Do that. Is Roger still with us for the deer or the bow hunting? Oh, okay.
Quick overview of product called the Compliance Engine and what would be looking for. I'll have the fire mark up and explain it, but direction from the council, if you're okay with the concept, then it would come forward, the next council meeting as a resolution, file the department to sign in an agreement. Product that's been used very successfully in Ankeny, Altoona, and Waukee locally, and then several departments across the state, and then thousands across the whole unit.
So what this is, is it's a web-based service that likes information on third-party vendors that do that test. A lot of those vendors are already clients engine because reports to them. Cost is $15 a report, basically. Section due, they send it on our behalf, so we have a big goal here is to make sure a lot of systems don't get checked. Actions as we go out. Whole goal is to drive compliance. Problem with it is just
So you're a business in Johnston. Charges a $15. Give the, that third-party entity, you know, uh, they submit their paperwork.
Yeah, and that's the other problem we have is we don't process is shown.
These are the, that was going to be one of my questions. Are there other communities in Iowa that you?
Yeah, yeah. Lot of, there's not a big difference in they're working with these companies.
I think I'm more or less okay with it, but although it begs the question, do we do this, did we do this prior to this, or did we actually?
Effective, but they already have, but they don't have
So greatly reduced, greatly reduced.
Sounds good, thank you. Okay, we are just a couple of minutes over, but we are going to take up item number four E. That is recognition of outgoing council member John Temple. How many times have we done this?
Couple. Probably this might be the third.
This is the third. Well, we want to get some pictures, but Councilman Temple, I just want to tell you just personally and on behalf of the entire council and all of the staff, we really do appreciate you stepping in at a time when, you know, we were, we were a little surprised by the resignation. Happy for him that he went off to do better, better, good and better things in Washington, DC. We did have a vacancy and you were, you were willing to step of work of we knew you were up to the task. You've been here before on a couple of occasions that as a city council. We do have a plaque that we want to present to you here today, and, and it reads, John Temple, in recognition of your dedication and commitment to the residents of Johnston for serving 16 and a half years on the city council and seven years on the planning and zoning. And I present this on behalf of our city council, all of the staff, and the entire John, I hope we ever need to call on you again.
Well, you know where I live.
Will be ready, willing, and able. You have been many times before, and
Sure.
John, it's been a pleasure working with you. And I wasn't new when I joined. You helped me navigate this.
It'll
Just staying here. Recording of the session closed under this paragraph should be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is You have a motion to go into closed session. Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Single please. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Motion passed.